Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals. Today is Monday, October 27th. We call this meeting to order. Samantha, can we have a roll call, please?
Chris Velecky?
Here.
Don Bemis?
Here.
Randy Burrows?
Here.
Clark Gruber?
Here.
Lisa Kupiers?
Here.
Amy Nichols?
Here.
Randy Timmer?
Here.
This time I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. For the meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from September 22nd, 2025.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Interested citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone out there for items not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I think we'll move on. Which brings us to item number six, unfinished business, in which we have none. So, item number seven, new business. And 7A, 30 Delaware Court. Kelly?
Thank you. So, the first item on our agenda tonight is a, an application from Mary Therese Connet, who has applied for a dimensional variance to construct a main floor addition to an existing single-family home at 30 Delaware. This is a 9,000 square foot lot in the R1A zoning district. The home is currently two stories and all of the bedrooms are upstairs. And Ms. Connet would like to construct a 13-foot by 28-and-a-half-foot addition onto the back of the house that would include a main floor bedroom. Currently, there is a large front setback. It's about 43 feet and the rear setback is almost 36 feet. So, the proposed rear addition would extend slightly less than 13 feet into the rear yard and would require a 1-foot-7-inch variance from the required R1A 25-foot rear yard setback. So, Ms. Connet has indicated that adding onto the front of the house is not a viable option due to the layout. In addition to the west would require her to remove the deck and the main entry to the house from the driveway, which she uses. And the east side setback is too small for an addition. The addition at the rear of the house is preferred because it would not require a complete reconfiguration to the first floor and would not result in the loss of the deck. So, as a reminder, we need to have a public hearing. And we do have Ms. Connet and Ryan Peterson here tonight to take questions.
Excellent. Well, shall we open a public hearing first? See if anyone is here to speak on it?
Do we prefer to do that, or?
Do we hear from the applicants first? Okay, yeah, we can do that. Yeah, if you guys would like to come on up and tell us a little bit about it and...
Okay, I'm 71 years old. I'm gonna only get older. And I have a steep set of stairs, two bedrooms upstairs. And so, the reason is I love my neighborhood, I love my house, and I want to die there. Well, not die there, but I mean, I want to live there until I die. And I, my original, the original drawing, which Ms. Kelly told my architect no way, I didn't want to take out my deck, I just wanted to go straight back and I was very close to the line. But then, I could keep my deck, best of both worlds. But the reality is, I can, I can give up some of my deck to be closer to my house and only, like I said, we're only asking for a foot and a half, I think. So, so I would love it if you would allow me to build my downstairs bedroom and a bath and a closet.
All right, well, I think at this time, we should probably have a motion to open the public hearing.
I move we open the public hearing on 30 Delaware Court, dimensional non-use variance request.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and the public hearing is open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this particular matter? Well, seeing none, I think we can go. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on 30 Delaware Court?
Support.
Support.
All right, been moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. The public hearing is now closed. All right, so. We have in front of us, basically, a foot and a half of a rear setback variance request. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant on this before we move under the criteria, or?
I do.
All right.
Could you reconfigure it and lose 19 inches? Would that be detrimental to your design and to the functionality of the space?
Very good question. And actually, I didn't have this in the packet, but this is a, it wasn't set, but I have a floor plan. I could hand you just to look at, just to have a feel for what we're looking at here. It includes not just, not just the master, the primary bedroom and the closet and the primary bathroom, but also guest bathroom, which we're removing to gain access to this addition. So, it's four elements there, a guest bathroom and the three elements of the, of the primary bedroom. In order to have a standard bedroom of 12 by 12, which is pretty standard, this is what we came up with. And she does not want it to be in just a little bit over 10 feet. She'd like a 12 by 12. So, to skim off 17 inches, definitely could do it, but it's not really what she wants to do and that's why we're here. And I can hand this off to you if you want to get a feel for, would you like to see the floor plan? Okay.
I'd like to see it.
Would you?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
I've got two eyeballs.
Sure. What the hey?
Yeah.
Exactly. You're on a roll. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take it. I'd be a liar if I didn't. Okay, sorry. One left. So, I mean, and then it's... Yeah. That's pretty much where we came up with, trying to kind of have a standard bedroom space and go along that whole space, so.
Any other questions?
So, the same dimensions could be gained for the bedroom if they lost about a foot and a half of deck. But it'd be fairly narrow going up to the baths.
Second?
If the bedroom were, on this picture, if the bedroom were to...
Pushed in, pushed, pushed further north?
Yeah, if the back wall was pushed in a foot and a half, you'd lose about a foot and a half of deck.
And that's just it, too. This is the give and take of like, she's already losing about three and a half feet of the deck. And it's about, that would make the deck in about the 10-foot range. Not tiny, no, but I mean, she's already losing three and a half feet. This is just kind of where we ended thinking that we're gonna shoot for this and hope you agree that, that, you know, she's already giving up some deck, hope not to lose more and have a standard bedroom. That's where we came up with 17 inch, or a foot 7 inches.
Any other questions?
And how deep is the property again? Total? 120?
120.
120? 66 by 120, like a...
It looks like 75 by 120. I can put it up on the projector. So, there's a bit of a delay with the projector.
We're all pretty quiet.
Yeah, all right.
Pretty significant delay. Apologize.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, well, I think then we need to start into our list. So, number one, there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions that apply into the property in question.
It appears to me there are no extraordinary circumstances with regard to the property. The placement of the house makes it difficult. If it had been moved farther forward, it would not have been an issue.
Right.
I agree. And the other side of that is the placement of the house is consistent with the other homes in the neighborhood. So, that, I believe that condition is met based on the placement and also maintaining the character of the neighborhood.
I also concur. If you, I'm on that, that road frequently and most houses are further setback, especially on that side of the road. You know, and there's, it's a good piece of property and I would concur as well.
All right, number two, the condition or situation of the specific piece of property which the variance is sought is not so general or recurrent in nature as to make it reasonably practical, the formulation of general regulation for such conditions or situations. Why, everybody's jumping up and down on that one?
I'm not so sure on that, really. I mean, if most of the house is on that street or that layout, then the question is, is one neighborhood something that you would talk about as owning or a dimensional change for?
Right, yeah. Knowing that all the houses are setback further, you know, we, we could be looking at the situation where they obviously have room in the front yard. And how much different is it going to be if all of a sudden, everybody starts adding onto the front of their house?
Which we have had a problem with, where porches magically turn into rooms.
Yes, exactly.
I think there's a good call in the packet that there's not been a request of this nature in that area in recent years. So, based on that, I think I can be swayed that that condition's been met.
Any other discussion on that? Moving on then, that such a variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property right?
Yes. I believe it is, yes.
Yes, agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we can look at that as, obviously, a main floor bedroom is probably fairly important. Moving on, then, the strict compliance with the requirements would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome.
It would be burdensome for a person who has trouble navigating stairs.
Yep, yep. I think that's the point. We have to look at that in that. Moving on then, that the variance will not significantly, will not be significantly detrimental to adjacent property in the surrounding neighborhood.
I believe that has been met as previously discussed. Going forward into the front yard would disrupt the nature of that neighborhood.
Yeah, I agree with that. The variance will not impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance.
This is one where I have a bit of concern. Where lines slowly get moved over time. Not on a particular property, but just on the general philosophy. How much is too much?
Right. Any other comments on that?
I mean, it's pretty arbitrary, right?
Well, it's not really. It's, it's said in the ordinance, how many feet?
Right.
Right, but how, how many of the homes in that area comply with that?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we would...
It does right now.
Well, in that, I think that, I think that leads us right into the next one, that the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to overcome or mitigate the... So...
I mean, 19 inches, that's what we're talking about.
Right, yeah.
Yep. And... Where do you draw the line?
Right, right. Exactly.
Now, if we look at this and imagine the right-hand wall and this, the outside wall here being moved in a foot and a half, it would be very difficult to net, to get from one end to the space to the other, very narrow. You could maybe do something a little bit with the partitions on either side of one of the closet areas, but the desk probably could not say where it was.
Right.
And, and the bedroom is not very large.
No, and as an age-in-place space, we may need to be looking at things like wheelchair access.
Exactly.
And to be able to have that ability. You know, one thing I could suggest is making sure your family members know what your wishes are. Just a small little plug there.
Yeah, and the term is age-in-place, by the way. Not getting old.
Age-in-place.
So, I'm assuming that everybody is...
In, in, in normal building codes right now, a 10-foot is a very old children's...
Right, exactly, yes, yes. It's very hard to navigate anything in 10 feet. All right, and moving on to the last one, the immediate practical difficulty. Causing the need for the variance was not created by the action of the applicant. In other words, not self-created, so...
I agree it is not. The house pre-exists the applicant.
Right, yep, yep.
I could also argue that not willing to give up the deck was created by the applicant. So, I struggle with these. This one always is the one I...
Yeah, this is, this is a tough one. It's an interpretation.
Right. But there was some deck space that was sacrificed.
Yes.
As I see it.
Yeah.
So, I think the, the best that... They tried the best they could in order to, you know, for the purpose of creating a first-floor bedroom for this individual. Because I think the line, the north line of the bedroom, if I'm configuring this or looking at it properly, I think, I know this property does line up with the back of the house. And then they extended that across the deck, so...
I, I agree. I'm always sensitive to the, the minimum amount necessary and I could see how they did give up deck. And it is, there is potential to go with a smaller bedroom or give up more deck, but then I see it becoming difficult to, again, maintain potential ADA distances and you may lose accessibility in that bathroom as well. So, to me, looking at this, it, this, which I imagine Kelly will add this to the packet later, to me, this appears to be the minimum amount necessary to fit the applicant's needs.
So, I have a question, maybe for you, Clark. Does adherence to ADA standards supersede ordinances?
Well, I don't think ADA necessarily is applicable in this space because it's not, it's not public.
I shouldn't use that terminology. That wouldn't apply to private residence.
I just meant the ability to, to be able to maneuver within a home if one is aging in place, but not...
But it is, but just as a question, doesn't it?
It's accessibility.
Is accessibility? Well, certainly ingress and egress into your home, accessibility. You know, size of hallways and entrances in and out of, you know, bathrooms. But I'm not necessarily sure. I'm just thinking, I'm not, you know, a 12-foot bedroom is, I think, the minimum size. So, that's what I, I meant for it to go to a 10-foot bedroom. I just think it would be, it would harder to maneuver.
Is accessibility on new construction, is accessibility, aren't there, aren't they 36-inch doorways now?
I would defer to... There's a little experience of that.
So, currently residential code does not define that in, in typical residential code. There are, if you are building for that, commercial spaces, all of those things, there are requirements for that. But in the residential code, no.
And, and if somebody, if it was new construction for someone who wanted that, then they could have that done?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes, yep.
So, I think the question, Randy, is when we look at all eight of these. Does the accommodation of the 19 inches for this space? And I think it's the latter, number eight, that it's going to come down to. Because it's a choice.
Right.
Right? They have made a choice to do a 12, whatever, 12 by 12 or whatever. When the choice could be made to do other things. I'm not saying I agree with that.
Right.
I'm just, again, he's here tonight. We have to, I mean, that's the interpretation.
Right, yep.
What I can say is, we have a bedroom. Our bedroom is 11 eight by 12 four. And there's room for a bed in the chests, no chairs. Pretty limited in what you can put in a room like that if you have a decent-sized bed.
Yeah. So, I guess the number eight has been met. Because it is the, you know, they have not created any issues.
Right.
So...
And given the home is constructed in 1920 and that it is Halloween week, but I don't think the applicant is a vampire. So, I don't think that they placed the home there in 1920, so I believe that's been met.
Okay, so let's, I have Clark fire up a motion.
Clark is the motion man.
I, I'm actually prepared to make a motion.
All right. All right.
Let's, let's see if I can get this one out. All right. Samantha, you ready? I would make a motion to approve the application for the variance, the dimensional non-use variance request for 30 Delaware Court, based on the placement of the home on the property and lack of a main floor bedroom and nature of the character of the neighborhood consisting of large front yard setbacks.
We all look at the...
Everybody looks at the lawyer.
I'll support that.
All right. All right, so we have a motion and support for it on the approval of the variance. Samantha, if we could have a roll call, please?
Velecky?
Yes.
Bemis?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Kupiers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Congratulations.
Got your 19 inches.
Yep. All right, so. Moving on then to item 7B. We are now at 50 North Shore Drive. Kelly, when you're ready?
And it's easier to get from there to here because the bridge won't be going up.
Very helpful.
But that's neither here nor there.
Oh, my gosh. You guys are in rare form tonight.
I'm putting in my request for the bridge to open so we can head on over to the north side. Okay, so at 50 North Shore, Spulstra Pools has applied on behalf of the Riverside condominium association to replace the pool, which is a 20-foot by 40-foot, the pool house and fence at 50 North Shore Drive. The need for a replacement is driven by the age and condition of the existing pool and the plans would replace these amenities in the same footprint in approximately the same size. So, this lot does have three front yards, North Shore Drive, South Street, and Black River Street. And because North Shore Drive is a front yard that has necessitated the need for a variance. During our conversation, some of you inquired about the original approvals for 50 North Shore. We have not been able to locate records related to the original approval and so we don't know what the original approval conditions or parameters were. And because of that, we felt that it was prudent to have the association seek the variance so that there would be no question about the work being permitted. So, we've got representatives from the association here today to take, provide answers to any questions you have and we need to hold the public hearing.
Sounds great. All right, well, if you guys want to step up and kind of tell us where, where we're at with things on this one and we'll move on from there.
My name is Doug Vrogandway. I am the vice president on the board of the association whose plate or lap this project has kind of fallen on over the past year and a half. So, I probably have a little more in-depth and Kelly's tired of looking, watching me at the other side of the window, asking for her. So, the support I have here tonight, John Geisel is here. He's the president of the association. And we thought it was important that we brought our spouses for spousal support here. And then I've got Scott Heizer here from, he's the owner of Spools to Pools. So, we've kind of done the owner's side and the technical side. So, hopefully, we have everyone here that is here to hear it firsthand of what any concerns are and we'll just leave it there. We thought we had everything in line. And then when we went to what was originally going to be kind of a, we, it was going, it was fine a year ago before we, the adoption of the new ordinance. And then because of that, we now have three front yards. And then we, by abiding by that, it's necessary for us to request where we are at and why we are here tonight. So, we're just asking for your consideration and approval for that so we can replace what we currently have with something that is deemed that it needs to be replaced. So, that's kind of the background from the owner's side.
All right, excellent. Thank you. All right, I guess at this time I'd take a motion to open a public hearing.
Motion to open a public hearing.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this topic? I'm just gonna guess there's nobody. All right.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
It has been moved and supported to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, wonderful. And moving back on with this. All right.
Want to ask questions?
Yeah.
No change, no fundamental change to what you have, just a complete replacement job?
Yeah, come on back up.
The only change that had to be done by the state requirement is that we did have to put a restroom in the pool house. That increased the size and, you know, it's, basically, that was the main thing that changed. The outside perimeter of the fencing is still well within the setback requirements and we ended up on one side, actually, one end and one side, we have increased the outside fence by two foot because by the time you lay a lounge down, there was only eight foot there. And we ended up, you kind of have to tiptoe safely around someone laying there and we thought, you know, it's two foot. So, we ended up, but we're still well within, I believe, the setbacks of that. So, that's, other than that, there isn't any changes. We just kind of tried to keep everything more as... Um, we just kinda tried to keep everything more as just a replacement.
Into the odd nature of the lot, there's three front yards and no side yards, correct?
By, by definition, that's our, my hearing, that's correct.
Kelly, there's no side yards, correct?
The yard. Opposite south. Is side yard. I don't, not, I won't be able to put it up, it's, would take too long.
Yeah, there's no, there's no.
You'd have a hard time in putting a small garden in it.
Correct.
Is what it is, it's kind of just the outlying, probably minimal setback that was required back then.
Yeah.
So basically we have a, like, I hate to bring, like Captain Lou's.
Right.
It's a complete replacement.
Right.
An existing property.
Right.
Where there's no other recourse to put the.
Yep, okay.
And and on top of, changes were required, I mean, it, it, things do, are beyond their useful life. And the change in the size of the building, because of probably the number of people in the condo dictated a, uh, you know, bathroom.
Right.
So.
State law says they have to have a bathroom, so.
To be honest, we, we didn't even want the bathroom. I mean, it, it was a requirement by the state, we, we were all in line right there, we've got a small half bath, everybody uses it, and they probably still will use your own place.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not our desire, it's just a requirement that the state just kinda started putting on, I believe, this year, um, and.
Yeah, it's.
Okay, okay, so. So it's just, so it's not by our desire, in fact, if you have, uh, the ability to overrule the state. And say, no bathroom, we don't wanna add that footage, we'll, we'll take that in a heartbeat.
That's awesome.
Um, actually, before you sit down, I do, and, uh, this'll probably involve both of you, but I do have a quick question. What is, what is the current construction of the pool? What kind of pool is it?
Metal sides with a concrete bottom, and then it's a concrete deck going around it.
Right, okay, so vinyl, vinyl side with concrete bottom?
Not vinyl, metal.
Sorry, I missed the first part of that.
It's, it's actually what they're, sorry, it's actually what they refer to as a Polynesian style, so it's a fiberglass panel with, with a cement floor.
Okay, alright, so i- in other words, I guess what I'm looking at is there is no fixing what is there.
No, they, they reach their useful life and that's it.
Yeah, okay, alright, okay, thank you.
Uh, I was on the planning commission when this planned unit development was approved. And the planned unit development philosophy was, things could be located differently if there was a good reason to do it. And the fact, when this was approved, there were many planned unit developments being applied for and approved. I cannot recall one that did not have a pool, which means that this would have been considered at that time. I don't see any difference, and I think all we would be doing here, really, if we need to grant a variance to say what's, this is pre-existing.
Right.
And it was approved. All it is really is kind of glorified maintenance activity if you don't count the fence moving out.
And since the original pool, you can probably stand at the fence and see two different pools that weren't there before across the street.
Right.
On, on both, two of the, the three front guards, there's now pools that can be actually visually seen from that area. So, you know, it, it's also, uh, uh, with what we see in the area now, and they're just doing a replacement, yeah.
I will say just one more thing, the, the fellow who'd set up this particular condo unit. Really put more care into it than many of the other applicants who came to us, he was trying to do it right.
Lisa, you had a question? Yeah, I have a question. Um, so on the drawing on page twenty-seven of sixty on the packet, um, there is, is that the side yard that is the lower left corner? That is, is, uh, in white boundary, or is that a different property, or?
That would be a different property.
That's a different property?
Yep.
Okay. So we said, where is the side yard in this?
That, that would be, that would technically be the side yard.
Okay.
Is where that white line is, that would define the side yard.
Okay, but it is, it is not part of this property, is it? Okay, okay, I, I know I was out there today, and, uh, it's not suitable anyhow, because it's, it's, uh, you know, sloped and bermed and everything, so. Um, I agree with, uh, um, Mr. Bemis. You know, that this is a, a, you know, maintenance situation and, um, yeah, so.
This is exactly why I wanted you to continue on to ZBA, so thank you for being present tonight.
I just keep getting older.
Very helpful. You're just aging in place.
Aging in place, remember that's what it's called.
Yeah.
There are times I want to remember that.
I, I completely agree, I mean, to me, this is, this is one of those little, almost nuisance things that really I find it funny that we have to hear that, you know. When it is a replacement of, you know, a failing project that would, or product that was, you know, put in X number of years ago, that, you know. Here we are, and we have to replace it again, and now we have to have another variance because of.
Well, the ordinance has changed.
Right, exactly.
If it had been the ordinance of the time, we, it wouldn't be here.
Right, yeah, yeah, well, ordinances tend to change all the time, so.
Oh, yes, they do. And sometimes for good reasons.
Right, yes, yep, so. Alright, so let's, um, knowing that we have to go through our list of criteria, we'll try and, uh, shorten this up just slightly. Uh, so number one, exceptional, extraordinary circumstances and conditions apply to the property.
Definitely, it's got three front yards.
There you go, alright. Uh, the condition is not so general or recurrent in nature to make it a general regulation.
That part of the city, there's definitely a lot of, uh, interesting pieces of property, like Captain Lou's has mentioned, but luckily Captain Lou's isn't asking for a pool today. I think that's been met.
Yeah, alright. Uh, that such variance is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of substantial property, right?
Yes, it is.
Absolutely, yeah.
Absolutely, they've always had.
The preservation of what they have already had.
Yep. Um, that strict compliance with the requirements, uh, would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Or render conformity unnecessarily burdensome, obviously. Kinda goes back to the previous.
Right, obviously.
Uh, the variance will not be significantly detrimental to adjacent property in the surrounding neighborhood.
It doesn't change it.
Right, yep. Uh, not, the, uh, variance will not impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance.
No.
No, yeah.
The variance request is the minimum amount necessary?
Yes, I believe they asked for two inches additional deck area and slightly smaller pool house to meet the state requirements.
Yeah, um, the immediate practical difficulty was not created, uh, by the applicant.
It was not.
Obviously not, so. At this point, love a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, look at Randy go. Clark's so excited.
No, I am very excited.
I had my pen ready, taking notes today.
Last month was rough.
Samantha, you ready? Make a motion to approve the dimensional non-use variance request for fifty North Shore Drive. So long as all permitting and ordinance and state of Michigan requirements are met. Based on the state's requirement for a restroom, and as this was pre-existing. And requires maintenance improvements, and will not be significantly detrimental to adjacent property or the surrounding neighborhood. And will preserve their current property enjoyment.
Second.
I feel like you got all that. Alright. It has been moved and supported. Uh, Samantha, if we could have a roll call again, please, when you're ready?
Bemis?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Kupiars?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Beliki?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright. You guys are awesome. Enjoy your new bathroom.
Yeah.
And the pool, I guess. Alright. So, that now brings us to seven C, ninety Avery Street. Once again, Kelly, whenever you are ready.
Thank you, okay, um. Mister Randy Faulkner, who is here tonight, has applied for a dimensional variance in order to reinstall railings on the widow's watch. Which is the very peak of the dwelling at ninety Avery, which is in the R-one C zoning district. So this is an existing family, single-family dwelling that was lifted following the issuance of a building permit in twenty twenty-three. To install a new foundation. And during the review for the project, staff determined that the railings surrounding the upper deck on the widow's peak would need to be removed. In order to maintain compliance with the required R-one C building height of thirty-five feet. Without the railings, which are about thirty-six inches, the height of the home would be thirty-four point seven feet, which is just shy of thirty-five feet. And prioring to, prior to issuing the permit, we communicated with the contractor about the railings, and it was agreed that the railings would be removed. This was stipulated on the permits for the project. During the summer of twenty twenty-four, as the project was approaching completion, the railings on the widow's watch had not been removed. We started to hear from the neighbors about, um, the railings and received questions about when they would be coming down. At that time, we followed up with the contractor who let us know that the property owners would be reaching out to us to discuss the railings. And Mister Faulkner contacted us to say that he did not want to remove the railings from the widow's watch, and he believed they were essential. To the architectural integrity of the home. Um, and after quite a bit of communication and an in-person meeting, the railings were eventually removed. However, later we realized that there was still a railing that was extending above the roofline. That ended up being part of a spiral staircase that led to the top of that peak. And we asked for that to be removed because, um, it was leading up to an unsecured platform at that time. The building code does not allow, um, stairs to lead up to an unsecured platform. And at that point, after receiving a letter from the city's attorney's office. Mister Faulkner submitted an application for a variance seeking relief from section four oh three oh three to reinstall the railings up on the peak. And that brings us to this meeting today, and Mister Faulkner is here to answer any questions that you have. And we need to hold a public hearing on this item as well.
Alright, wonderful. Thank you, um, so, uh, Mister Faulkner, if you wanna step on up for a second? Maybe give us the brief overview of.
The whole.
Yes, of, of where we're at and.
Yeah, uh, we bought the property in like twenty twenty, I, I delivered information with the packet, I'm assuming everybody, everybody read it. So, um, so we knew in the beginning that the railings were gonna be at risk, and we thought maybe we'd go deeper. Uh, but the, our lot is on Avery, which is a dramatic slope, so not an option. I already, kinda, we had to kinda put up a wall for water coming towards the garage and put in a, um, a, a commercial sewer pump underneath the street. And then, when, some of this didn't sound very good, but, uh, not easy to get contractors to go right to work right now. So at all times, I was in communication with her, telling her, I wasn't telling her I wasn't going to do it. Um, we did have complaints that came in on a regular basis, which I understand, which is why we met. Uh, they were, they were from the same person pretty much in the entire time. Um, so we decided to rehab this property instead of knock it down, that was the goal. And my wife grew up here in the summers, and the, the reason we bought the property is because of that. It had a cracked foundation, which we knew, and there were other factors that led us to the fact that we had no off-street parking. Um, so it seemed pretty simple that we could scrape away the berm that was in front of it, almost get to the height that we needed. And come pretty darn close, if not even better, by sinking the house down a little bit, uh, to be able to have it keep its same look. Um, that did not take place, when we lifted the house, it was seventy-nine tons, none of the main beams in it were the same beam, they were all compiled of different sections of beam. So we actually had to reconfigure all the steelwork under it, which did not help us, it took the house up a little higher when we had to do that. Uh, we had to run the sewer pipe through the backyard, which actually lowered that, and I didn't wanna bring in black dirt to correct and stay at the same spots, that doesn't help us either. Um, so I looked at the ordinance and went through and, um, in, not in the, and I don't know, I may be wrong, you would know maybe before I would. I can't find any place in our ordinance that says that the railings are the height. It's a widow's walk, it's not a widow's peak, all the things in statute have a roof over them, this does not have a roof. So our, our goal here, really, just the bottom line, is we're really just trying to keep the historical look of the home. Uh, we bought it that way because we liked it that way, we think it lends its architecture to the whole mineral park historic area. And so that's kinda led us to where we are today, hoping that we can meet with you guys and, and preserve the house and put the railings back on the top up there. We already have pulled down, uh, the spiral rail, the spiral stairs that weren't in the permit, but we pulled them down. Uh, that, we paid for that, so it wasn't cheap to kinda step in and kinda get that done. We're in the process of having the roof, the very last thing that, that needs to be done on the house right now is the roof, it had a few holes in it. And so that's all stripped off right now, um, so we just had them do it at the same time and had it pulled together instead of sending out a separate crew, which, again, very difficult to find.
Gotcha, alright. Why don't we, uh?
Question for the applicant, if that's okay?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, then we'll open a public hearing.
I, I drove by and saw the red caution tape on the railing, that's the railing in question, correct or no?
No.
The railing that, then the, the peak up, above that, then?
Yeah, so the dwelling is two stories with a pilot house on top, or, or a crow's nest, whatever you wanna call it, the room that is, allows you to go out onto the rooftop balcony. On that has always been what they call a widow's walk, that was then encased with a railing.
Okay.
Um, and that's where, back in the day, ladies would go and look at the cities to see if their ships were coming back in, so those have been off. But it is that little, it's, I think it's like ten by fourteen or whatever it is up there.
That's what I understood from the packet, but the red caution tape threw me off, so I wanted to ask, just wanted to make sure.
That roof is unfortunately full of holes, so they're replacing it right now.
That explains that, thank you.
Yeah.
Kelly, is there any way you can put up the picture that I sent you today?
Tell me.
You guys are really working on this.
Magic.
Ta-da, so this is not the picture that you sent, but this is a Google, uh, street view image.
I was completely confused by a lot of things. And, and, and nothing.
No, no, yeah.
So, that first railing that's up there.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a widow's walk.
No.
No. The building, and I would consider it a building structure that's closed, that's the widow's walk.
Yeah, that's, that's a pilot room, crow's nest, whatever you wanna call it, where those railings are sticking up on the top, that was the top of the spiral stairs, cause they were aligned to go with the railing that was around the top of that, that's the widow's walk.
So it's on top of all of that?
Yes.
Correct, the widow's walk, and it, this is, it was there, it's been there, um, it's part of the design of the hor- the house, there's a letter in there. Um, from one of the neighbors who did extensive research on architecture and Georgian-style homes and all that kinda stuff. But it, it's not, nothing we're adding, we just want to return it.
My question to you is, what's the difference between a widow's walk and a deck? And is it pertinent to this discussion? Cause we had a deck issue brought here once before.
So, the zoning ordinance does not define widow's, actually, the zoning ordinance doesn't use the term widow's walk at all, it uses the term widow's watch. Uh, ultimately, it would likely be a question for this body to define widow's watch and interpret that term, because it's not defined in the zoning ordinance.
That's my, my issue, cause I went by, I think we all went by your house today. And I was, I was struck by the structure, okay, not, cause I thought the structure was the issue. And that the roof where there's a vent, there looks like there's a vent.
Correct, there is. It's, it's an old furnace vent.
Okay. But then as I, I talked to Kelly, it was like, no, it's, it's the top. It's like the roof of the widow's, right, crow's nest, that word. That's in discussion.
Yeah. Yep.
So I think we would be taking the, if you can make that a little larger maybe, I don't know if you can do that with your, with your uh, mouth, but it's that metal case walkway that would get railing all the way around there?
Yes.
Yeah, the very highest structure underneath the tree branch.
Yeah, so all of that, what, there's a railing that goes around that entire.
That room is like a ten by thirteen foot room and it had a railing. It wasn't on the outside edge. It was actually in the middle, so it wasn't even, it wasn't as big as the roof, but it's made to be a, a walk, basically.
Yeah, I was a little confer, concerned at first, or, or, you know, I've been by it a bazillion times. But the entire walkway up there is all preserved. That's okay. It's on top of that building. And it's gonna be basically the height of that, that uh, that spiral staircase.
Correct, it's gonna exceed, it would exceed the thirty-five feet after we had to do what we had to do because of the slope and the extra steel and et cetera. It's going to exceed it by the height of the railing.
So my, back to my question to you, or you, in the ordinance, cuz I'm not privy to the understanding of the ordinance. Is there special exceptions made for these widow walks, watches, whatever we wanna call it?
Not that I'm aware of, and we had uh, other places where we, we looked at HVAC type equipment that were required, you know, with the property, but this would be another structure up there that would, you know. It was awesome that they could take the five up and then create a parking space. So you guys are, are parking a, a car in there now, right?
So we have a dump, yeah, we have a tandem garage that goes under the house.
And, and I think that raised it, but then that kind of lost that, that walkway up there. But you still have this entire walkway on that, on that roof that's still preserved. That's what I was concerned about. To me, that's the architectural part of it, and that looks well-preserved and will be. It's on top of all of that.
So the, the widow's walk, though, is, that's an architectural feature that is put on homes, a lot of, in the east coast, um, for these ladies that would wait for their husbands to come back in their ships. It is a widow's walk, does not, does not have a roof, but it is part of a, of a Georgian style home. And, you know, we, we decided to preserve this. We didn't want to knock it down and just build a box. It would have been a better economic decision, I'll tell you now that we're standing on the other side of it. But our goal was just to preserve it as it was. And so that's, we, we thought we could get away with it by getting it lower, but I just can't, I couldn't get it any lower due to the slope in the way the street is.
When the project started, you knew that that all needed to be removed, correct?
We knew that based on what we were looking at that was gonna be removed, but we thought we could get the house deeper. So when he was like, hey, they're saying this, I was like, yeah, that's fine. Let's just finish the house and we'll get it resurveyed. And so, but the other problems that came into play with the, with the steel and the slope, it, it did not work out that way. So now the top of the roof is exactly at, we're pretty close or whatever. It's thirty-five feet. So the exception would be to go over.
How many feet did it actually elevate the house?
It actually, uh, the steel, it actually impacted the height by about two feet, maybe a little bit more. Most of it was, there was about a seven-foot berm in front of the house. So the house, cuz that's a big slope that goes down to the lake there, so scraping that away got us the majority of the distance that we needed to do it.
I thought it was five.
No, it was, I couldn't see over it and I'm not six feet, but I could not see over the, over the berm on either end.
Okay, I just thought maybe that, it, the house got raised five.
No, no, no.
No, it was very common with old rails to not be very high to begin with.
Right.
Like a couple feet sometimes. And now by law, you have to have a much higher rail.
Correct, there's an ordinance for the height to have to be as well. The old ones were uh, basically, I think, a little, little over thirty-six. The old ones that we ripped off of there were.
Probably the first time it ever had rails, they were more like two feet or two and a half feet.
That, that's a possibility. You know, somebody could have done something before us.
And the project was able to preserve the home, improve the cracked foundation, but we still have all the same living spaces, including the entire deck there on the roof that provides views probably of the, the ocean, or the water and the beach and the lighthouse. And in fact, even inside that building up there, there's views, correct? The, that, is that, is that the fourth? Is that like the fourth?
I would call it the third because the first one's a basement, but yeah.
The third, okay. So the widow's walk is like the fourth?
Yeah, I mean, this is, there's a house right behind me, a blue house that's right behind me.
Mm-hmm.
It's four stories of the full story on top of it. I mean, it's not uncommon back in there. It's not a historic home. It's behind us. It was a home that, one of the cottages was unrebuildable, kind of like Dan Thompson. He couldn't rest, restore his grandmother's cottage, so he kind of picked a cottagey view and built it. But his is, is also the same height. So I'm, I'm nowhere near higher than either one of those. When you're on that roof, both of those roofs are higher than your head or equal to your eyesight.
Now, we recently were looking at another variance request where a third floor was not approved.
Mm-hmm.
In this case, we're talking about elev, lifting an entire house. It was already that many floors. But if that upper part were to be requested today, I don't think you would have gotten this far.
Uh, yeah, maybe. I, I don't know. Like I said, our only goal is to really just make it look the way that it did and preserve the architecture.
Cuz I remember growing up, I don't remember that, that piece on the top.
Oh, it's, it's, my wife grew up here too, so not local, but in the summertime. And then the lady that wrote me the letter today, she's been around for thirty years or whatever the case may be. It, and I went to Western a long, long time ago and I used to come out here all the time. It's been there as long as we've been, all been doing, been around here.
That small piece on the top?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
As long as you mean, okay.
Yeah, so the railing that's on the bottom, see how they have the sailboats carved into them, cuz the house is near the sail view. The railing up top is exactly the same. They were built at the same time when they were done. They're exactly the same. The same construction, same material.
I have a couple of questions. So how, how tall is the railing that is there right now? Cuz I think that was the same railing that was on the widow's walk, watch.
Yeah, this railing right here, I don't have the exact measurement, but if I was gonna guess, I'd say it's probably about thirty-six to thirty-eight inches. It's, it's rotted out right now, so part of my roof job, obviously, it's a flat roof. You replace it, you gotta replace all the decking, but um, so it should be right about that. The posts themselves are probably, I don't know, forty maybe at the, at the cap top, but the railings themselves would be a few inches lower. Pretty standard. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I went by there a couple of times. I used to have on my porch, we redid our railings and they had to do them to code and I I wouldn't say they were twenty-four inches, but probably not much more than thirty, and this kind of looks the same to me. Um, so you said the crow's nest, you call the crow's nest. That was there. And you know, the um, I don't know if you can pull them up. There's a lot of really great pictures on the parcel records from years and years ago, you know, from like two thousand one, two thousand. I, I was looking at those and then I went by this property a couple of times. I think the properties behind you, um, because of the nature of that area, I think they're, they're on higher ground, which may.
They're even. The one, the blue one's the same lot that mine is. Dan's is probably.
Well, I know Dan's is the same as yours, yeah, but.
This is actually a little higher. His lot is higher than mine, cuz he's up the hill a little bit.
Because I know there are some houses behind you that are higher, but um, they, I know you y, yours is closer to the sidewalk now, you know, because of the, I mean, it was raised up, but.
Yeah, if you, so you, you know, the city says the average of the highest in the back and the lowest in the front. My backyard and the house directly behind me are the exact same level. There's no difference. So that lever, level measurement's the same. Then, of course, they have a drive-in garage in front of theirs as well, the street level. And our end of the house for the garages is at sidewalk street level as well.
Yes, and it is the average, the, okay. Um, but I, I um I don't, I, I just, I struggle with this. I think that, you know, it's, it's, I know it's, um, I really appreciate the historical aspect of this, but um I, I just, I mean, that stairway, I, really concerns me. It was removed, but if we put up a railing there, I, I mean, I just I just have concerns about it. And I don't, I don't think it takes away, I think there's, with the little bit of room you have left, I think there's a wood railing edge type of thing that you could do to kind of finish that off. But I think the um there are some other properties around the city that have flat roofs. And we were very concerned when they were under construction about them being eventually, you know, fenced off and made accessible, you know, to, as a viewing area. And you've got a beautiful viewing area there already, so um.
Mister Chairman, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
I, I just, I do wanna remind that roof ducts are, are allowed.
Yeah, oh yeah, of course.
And, and that, and that we are pur views to decide on this application, so we can't give guidance to um, decision-making. But Kelly, could you pull up page fifty-six of the packet? And, and the images there, um, compared to the street view we were just looking at, um, was the, the little um, widow's watch, the little um, box on top added during this construction project? Cuz in these two pictures, I'm having trouble.
No, I was able to look back in the Google back in two thousand seven. You keep going back, it's still there.
So these pictures are different angle?
It's just a different angle.
Yeah, you can't see it in the picture.
One of, one of the requests was to raise it, which was able to done to do, but staff said then when they would have to remove that. So I think they got their, they removed the, the railing, but they were able to raise the house. And now they want the railing put back on, I think.
Well, there's a little, there's a little deviation there as far as, we did, the permit said take the railings off, but we did think we would be able to sink it down, but with the water flow, there's zero chance of doing that. And the additional steel also increased the height of the house significantly cuz of the weight of the house and the way it was designed underneath. So I, a hundred percent get what you're saying. You're not incorrect, but there are a few more facets to that. Than just the straight out, we raised it and now we want more.
Well, well, the permit said to take it down so you could raise it.
Sure.
We're now done, now you want it put back on.
Correct, you are a hundred percent correct, but we did think we would be able to get down in the ground further.
So times like this make me wish that we had some um, historical um, guidance, you know. I mean, so like a lot of, a lot of people have, you know, a lot of towns have historical associations and historical rules and, and we don't.
We don't.
We don't. So in absence of that, we have what we've, what we, what we have to make a, a determination on. And I kind of go with a, yeah, the, the permit said, this is what you're going to do.
But what would be the relevance if we did have the history on it?
Um, well, if, if we had a historical, um, you know, group that, historical district, like if this was made that, then, then, you know, they have, will decide what pink colors you can use.
Yeah, but then you'd have to designate it.
We're probably getting too far away from the case at hand here.
Yeah.
Sorry, yes, we're digressing.
How about, how about at this time, I'd love a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is now open for anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter.
Can I, can I say one more?
Yeah, yep, absolutely.
So the other thing is too, when you read through the ordinance, I don't see anywhere where it does say railings. I could be a hundred percent wrong because I'm not an attorney and didn't go through it, but everything mentioned in there is a roof structure. It's not a roof structure, so don't know that it has any bearing, but that is the case inside the ordinance.
Let me ask you this. Is it your intention, if we grant you this variance, to have those stairs put up there and have the ability to go up and look and be on that deck?
You, you tell me. I would love to because that's what people used to do, is go up there. We'd never spend much time up there. Um, there was a ladder there when we first got there, which we thought was incredibly dangerous, so we took it down and, and redid it, but.
So you're, you're.
I would, I would love to do that, but if you do not want me to do that, I'm okay with that as well.
Um, we can't tell you what to do, but let me ask you, is, are you asking this, is your main issue aesthetic or functional?
It's aesthetic, but that is a functional spot too. Widow's walk is a functional spot historically. But if you say, don't do it, then I won't.
Now, my question to the attorney is, if we, becomes a functional use, is it a floor?
Mister Chairman, if I may, point of order, could we um, ask the applicant to have a seat and continue with the public hearing? I think we can continue some of this after we close the public hearing, thank you.
I think the discussion is fruitful, but we can do that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, yeah. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this?
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, it's been supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Mister Bullock, yeah, I, I didn't mean to offend. I think you're on good track. I'm just trying to help maintain the rules of order.
So let me go back to the attorney. If it becomes a functional use, does it become a floor?
I, I don't believe it would become a floor because there's no roof here.
Right.
But to, to go back to the question of whether whether the railing counts toward the height, I would point to section four oh four subsection two, which states, "In all R one districts, the highest point of a cupola, widow's watch tower, similar feature that extends above the roof line shall be considered the highest point of the roof surface on roofs with such features." Again, the zoning ordinance does not define the term widow's watch, so the interpretation of that term is ultimately up to the ZBA. However, dictionary definition of widow's walk would be a rail observation platform atop a usually coastal house. So if you are following a layperson dictionary definition, the widow's watch would include the railing. Again, with the caveat that, to my knowledge, the ZBA has not defined widow's watch, and that would ultimately be up to the ZBA to do.
Okay, Mister Chairman, can I ask another question?
Go right ahead.
Kelly, do you know what the basis of the neighborhood's complaints were? Were, was it procedural? Was it aesthetic? Was it?
My understanding of the complaints is that it, the concern was the height violation.
So procedural?
Procedural.
The, the that area looks very different now from when we moved in forty-some-odd years ago. It was cottages. Now it's very tall houses.
Yeah.
And I think there's a lot of hard feelings about that among many people. Now, I will say, those cottages were basic, they were slapped together. They wouldn't meet any sort of code for the most part. But the fact is, the lots are smaller and the city's zoning ordinance took that into account. And it's been taken advantage of in many areas. I wouldn't say this one is necessarily, but they've just gotten so big, it, it's not the same neighborhood at all.
Yeah, it's progress, though.
Yeah, and they're getting taller so they can see over each other, I think.
I think, I think there's a bit of that. All right. If you guys will allow me, I have a couple of questions. You're the chairman, cuz I, I love my questions. Um, number one question. Going back to this, and I, I, you answered part of my question in your last statement, but um, when was the uh, spiral staircase installed?
Twenty, twenty twenty.
If you could step back up to the mic, just so that everyone could hear it.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, okay.
So.
If you could get closer to the mic yourself, with the help at home.
Yep. So, again, being in the building industry, yes, the, the terms have always been on rooftop decks, railing defines height. Um, I, I struggle with finding any other definition for that. Um, again, tha, that's my background, so I, I know that one well. Um, I, I very much struggle with the fact that, you know, in the permitting process, whether it was you that agreed to it, the builder that agreed to it, whoever agreed to it, said that during this process, the railing would be removed and not reinstalled based on height. I completely understand where you're coming from, thinking, okay, great, we'll agree to it. Hopefully, we can keep this down far enough. Again, obviously, things happen. Um, but I, I really struggle with that fact that knowing that it, it wasn't a possibility and hoping for it. I, yeah, I, I'm, I'm personally really struggling with that one. Um, I've, I've done a lot of projects that I wish we could have done this and it never works out. So, um, I just can't, I, I can't find that in there. So tho, those are kind of my sticking points right now. Um, I'll refer back to you guys on.
I have, I have a question. I have, I have a question. Was the condition of the rail on the widow's watch fairly similar to that of the lower rail that you say needs replaced?
Yeah, yeah, the roof up there too. We had, there used to be a deck built on top of that with the widow's walk. We ripped it down and put a rubber roof and a walking membrane on top of it, knowing that it was going to be a height challenge.
But you didn't.
But it was all rotten.
But you didn't take down the rotten rail?
Yeah, we took, we took down the rotten railing.
And that's the one that the city was saying it needs to come down, but it was there?
Yes, it was there and we, and they said it needed to come down.
Mm-hmm.
When, when did the railing come down?
Did they do that roofing job in the fall last year or the spring? Do you remember where the permit was?
I'll have to look that up.
I think, I think it was late, early, it was either late fall or early spring this year.
But the rail was in place when the house was lifted, is that correct?
Correct, it was there existing already.
Okay, so we had a rotten rail, it was left in place and the house was elevated. And the rail would have to be replaced before the deck could really be used.
Well.
I mean, rotten wood's got to come off in our house.
Exactly, so it could have come off earlier.
Yeah.
But it didn't.
Well, yeah, I think that also brings us back to, when was the staircase removed?
Uh, staircase was removed when roofing contractors there doing the roof now. They are the ones who removed it from the house when they were doing that project.
Okay, all right, I think that's the bigger one in this.
If, um, and thank you for what you said. That is what I wanted to also mention is that there was an understanding that the railings would have to be removed. And there is a letter in the packet from Bloom Slugger, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, stating that the stairway, uh, it was still there at that time. So, um, then it talks about heights, you know, railing heights and everything. And thank you for, Ms. Burrows, please don't intend that I was recommending anything. I, I like, I like a finished look as it sounds like you're seeking as well. And did not mean to overstep my responsibilities here. But I, I really struggle with this, that that was the agreement, that the railing would be, it would be too tall. It would be removed. And now it seems like you're coming back around for a second chance and I, I struggle with that. And I do appreciate what Mr. Bemis has said because it seems like there, yeah, that things are, neighborhoods look very different. Character of neighborhoods is very important and we're trying to do all we can to preserve what is here at South Haven.
Yeah, that's what we're doing with the house, we're trying to preserve it.
I, I do appreciate that, yeah, that, that was, yes.
So a procedural question, because I think that the letter that asked him to take it down is irrelevant. Because he could have gone to the ZBA then, or he comes to the ZBA now. Correct. So my point of view, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, completely irrelevant. Because all it did is stated what the ordinance was. Right. And he's ask, he, he's asking for a variance to the ordinance. Right.
I would disagree with you on that, on that, in that knowing the condition, knowing the situation, the appropriate course of action in my mind would be to ask permission before proceeding.
Which he's doing right now.
After the fact.
No, it's down.
Well, well, the, the railing needed to come down for approval to do the project. I just happened to find out that the staircase was still there.
Right, which is down.
That was, was connected to the railing at the same height.
Which is down.
It is down.
Down. So now he's coming back and he's doing what we've asked him to do, which is to say, can I do this? I'm asking for a variance to do this. So I think we should be focused on whether we give him the variance or not.
Right.
And without that letter having any relevance to this discussion whatsoever.
Point, point of information, I believe that they were asked to, it was stated in the permit that the railings would have to be removed. It was not the letter, the letter was at, well after.
I completely agree, I completely agree.
But it was part of the permit in the first place.
Understood. But when it becomes, it's just like the people that came before us, right? They're just, he's just at a different stage. Right. Asking for the variance. I, I agree with you in the fact that, that, that the letter doesn't hold as much weight at this particular point because of where we're at. The problem is, is that, to me, the bigger issue is knowing that the railing had to come down. If you were going to seek the variance, you should have sought it at that time. Right. That's the bigger issue to me. It, to me, I go back to the last discussion we had with the woman who wanted to put the three condos. Right. She didn't know. Right. She didn't know if she was going to be in variance or not. Right. Or in or out of variant, whatever happens to be. Yeah. So I, I see that as, again, we can discuss. I don't, I don't think we can argue that here because it was pretty clear that it wasn't going to be. Well, it would have, at any point in time, it would have been.
And the three condos didn't have a permit approved already. That was just.
Well, they're, they're not relevant to this application, but I, I think being told the railing had to come down and given the scale of this project, it, it would have been pertinent to file for a variance then versus.
It would have been easier, yeah.
I think it would have been more legal too. I mean, we have the.
We got him, he can ask, answer the question.
The attorney, okay, I'll state my opinion, the attorney can correct me as necessary. They were told to do something, they didn't do it. Now they want a variance to allow what they've been told not to do. And they have the right to ask for a variance, but the point is, they proceeded knowing that it was going to be outside of the conditions that were placed upon it. Now you can correct me.
I guess I'm not exactly clear on the question, but I'll, I'll just clarify. The, the railings were removed before the June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five letter was sent from our office.
Right.
The June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five letter only concerned the spiral staircase.
Yep. Right.
But to, I guess, to the extent that there was a question of.
Was that on the permit? The spiral staircase? It, it doesn't, I guess we have to look at the, I guess we have to look at the merits of the case now. Just focus on that. I don't, I don't think they were aware of the spiral staircase in the permit. I, you know what I mean?
That's true, staff didn't see the spiral staircase until the railings came down. And then it became clear that there were additional railings sticking up above.
Right, and he took them down and now we're sitting here.
And they needed to come down.
Are we going to let them put up the railings or not?
So it may help to review the standards, the standards.
Yep.
And discuss one by one.
Yes, we did close the public hearing. All right, well, let's jump in here, guys. Number one, there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property. Any one of you jump in on that?
We could say yes on the grounds that it has a substantial slope. And the house required lifting. If you wanted to put a garage under it.
Right. Yeah, the house, the house required lifting if you wanted it to be lifted.
Right, that's a good point.
The house did not require.
That's, that's true, so in that case.
So I, I, I think that's a hard, that's a hard thing. It, it required probably some foundation work, but it didn't require lifting. That's a, that's a sticking point.
Thank you for the correction, I agree.
Yep. Uh, number two.
So where did we come out with number one?
Did we say no, did we say no to number one?
Well, I, I'd love some more, yeah, if you guys have some more.
The lifting was permitted.
Yep, absolutely.
And wasn't it also to allow for the garage?
Yes.
And they had no parking and they had a cracked foundation.
I wasn't saying it wasn't needed.
Some foundation work would have needed to be done.
Absolutely.
We might come back to that when we get to minimum amount, but I, I feel like that's been met.
Mr. Chair, if I could interject.
Yeah.
I would encourage the ZBA members who might be inclined to make a motion to take detailed notes so that when a motion is made, they can sufficiently explain their findings for each of the factors.
All right, Clark's already shaking his head, this may have to be you again.
Clark says no.
Oh, my goodness.
I know, I got you.
Thank you.
So for number one, do we believe that has been met or not been met and why, or why not?
All right, well, let's start at one end, then, let's go through the seal of value. Lisa, how do you feel?
I'd say no, because I realize even the parking situation, it sounds like, and appears when you go through the neighborhood, there's a lot of those cottages that have the same situation where they do not have off-street parking, so.
Due to the fact that the zoning accounts for very small lots, this is not exceptional.
Brandy, your thoughts?
In my opinion, I'm going to go against the grain here that the applicant didn't create the topography of that lot. And in, in that, for that reason, I'm, I believe that is met. That is exceptional topography, there's a cracked foundation and no parking, I, which I do think we can dig into another item, but I believe that's been met.
Chris? I agree with Brandy. Kind of for the same reasons.
And I would say no. I mean, they were able to correct the, the foundation, which was awesome, but they also chose to raise to be able to put the driveway in, which creates something new that was created by the applicant and the condition of that, that property. I mean, it's the railings and going into this knowing, I'm going to have to take the railings down, but I'm going to get the house on a foundation, I'm going to get a parking garage, and I still have that entire walkway up there, so I, I, I say no.
I'm saying no as well, for all the reasons Clark said. And again, that didn't have to be lifted to that height to get that closed. If, if that house wasn't listed, lifted and just the, the foundation work was done, they could probably still have railings, I think.
Yeah, okay. I think all the reasons given pertain to number eight, not number one. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, we're, we're certainly going to pop right back into that. So, yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I still have to stay on the no side of that too, just because of the circumstances. Um, I, I think there's a couple of different ways that you can look at that, but when it comes right down to it, I, I think I have to, to stay on that side of it. So moving on, that the condition or situation of the specific piece of property for which the variance is sought is not so general or current in nature is to make it reasonably practical of the formulation of general regulation for such conditions or situations.
I'm going to say on that one, yes. It's that whole area is exception after exception after exception. And it does have quite a drop between the two. So that one I would say yes to, where I'd known before.
Yeah, I agree with Clark on that one.
Any other thoughts, comments on that?
Yeah, I agree with that. I, we've, we aren't getting widow's watch related variance requests every day. Now, one could argue if this was granted, everyone in that neighborhood come, could in theory come board, but we can't talk about could. So I, I believe that's been met cautiously.
I would lean that direction. I think it would be, to me, it is sensible to consider a widow's watch to be a deck. If there was, if we were to make a statement. It might simplify matters, but in this case, it's not really the issue. The issue is the height of the building.
Yes, yes, I, I personally think a widow's watch should fall under any type of rooftop deck. Anything that would require such a railing as a deck on a roof would be reasonably set as such. So, moving on then, that such variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property, right?
No. I say no to that too.
Yeah, I would say no on this one.
I don't think a widow's watch is a property right.
I think that's, I, I think it could be a tough thing. I think you bought it that way, knowing you had it, but you also gave it up knowing that you went for a garage and the reason your foundation, so, yeah. I mean, in this particular situation, I, I would agree with the no. Uh, moving on, that strict compliance of the requirements, with the requirements of this ordinance would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose? Or render conformity unnecessarily burdens them?
No, it's a residence.
Right.
Am I allowed to say anything, just one thing?
Why, let it, why don't you let us get through the list here real quick and then I'll, I'll bring you back up for a second and we can talk again on that. Where we, I'm sorry, where we at?
Number four.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I was, as far as your comment on that.
I would concur, no. It, I don't think it, it's burdens, it's, it, we're not taking away bedrooms, parking, even view. There's an entire deck that's still up there.
Right.
Uh, so I would, I would say no.
I would think, given the nature of the consideration when they went into this project, this was also unknown, so nothing's being taken that wasn't already agreed to be given up.
That would be my big sticking point on that, so. Uh, all right, the variance will not be significantly detrimental to adjacent property or the surrounding neighborhood.
That's a hard one, just because, you know, there, there are individuals that are upset when the person in front of them builds another story, which they can do, and then, then they no longer have the view. But they don't own the property in front of them. So, you know, necessarily, the size of the house is, is fine. It's just then going above and, and asking, uh, variance for that is different than it just being there, so.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I've, I've, I've always said you cannot buy a view. You'll never be able to do that. This doesn't even really, to me, even have to do with a view. I mean, railing, you can see through, it, it's, it's more a.
This is height?
Yeah, it's, we're, we're back to the height issues again and we're back to the fact. But how many houses in that area are above the height restriction? Would anybody guess a percentage? I don't, I don't know that it.
More than zero, I would assume.
Well, probably more than zero, but a- again.
I think the height, um, the maximum height requirements have changed over the years. And so, you know, the, the height requirement now is not the same as the height requirement in twenty-ten. It's not the same as the height requirement in nineteen ninety-five. I think it's very difficult to make that assessment.
And the uniqueness of that area, you, we have a lot of homes that have that gray coupon closeness that you can open up a window and.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the nature of the area.
Yes.
On, on the other side of that, I would say, well, there wasn't a tendency here for or against this application. There was a substantial packet in support of it. There's only so much weight I would say I can take with that considering it wasn't submitted earlier and it wasn't notarized or anything like that. But I do want to state for the record that neighbors did seem to be, while there was some non-support, there was a considerable amount of support, which surprises me for this application, actually.
And as far as the other homes in the area, there are many of them. I have no idea percentage, but single-story, very small, little low cottages that are, you know, towered over on both sides, so.
Say that has been met, given the nature of the neighborhood. Does that bring us to number six?
Yeah, it does, as a matter of fact. Uh, the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of this ordinance.
I would say yes, we have a height limit, this would exceed it.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, I don't, I don't see any other way to look at that one.
So, are you saying it hasn't been met or has not been met?
If the, if the variance were granted, this would exceed the height limitation for that area.
So, the variance would impair the intent?
Yes.
So, it's a no?
Yes, it's, yes, correct.
You're right. It's a double yes and no. I haven't heard that one before, but yeah.
And then we get to eight and it all goes crazy. All right. That the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to overcome or mitigate the difficulty. I mean, yes, I believe he's probably asking for the minimum amount.
I, I would concur on that. He's not asking for more or less. He's asking what he needs.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Putting a lifeguard stand on the top of it, so.
I, I, I would say that, you know, it hasn't been discussed yet, but that would also be the minimum necessary to provide safety for access to that space.
Right. Yeah. Again, if, with no stair, with no staircase, then it takes that out of it. It just becomes a roof. All right. Um, and finally, the last one, the immediate practical difficulty causing the need for the variance request was not created by the action of the applicant.
It is not met.
Right. I, again, I don't see how, how we can say anything but that on that particular one.
Especially because it was agreed to originally for the permit, for the project to go forward. Had we been here in the beginning.
Right.
We might look at it differently because of the, the foundation.
Yeah, yeah.
Does the board, and maybe this is an individual opinion, see a difference for a variance request if it, a variance request had originally been requested to replace existing railing versus a variance request that is asking for the spiral staircase and railing? Do we see, is there a difference there? Does, is it pertinent?
I don't know if it's particularly pertinent in this case, but yes, I would, it would be a totally different. Because it, once again, it would, to me, it would be much like what we just did on the front yard pool.
No, but we.
But this.
If the, if the railing, if the railing was there and it wasn't in question of it had to come down to, to do this garage and it was rotted and needed to be replaced, but yet it was over the height restriction, that would be.
No, Randy, then we wouldn't have granted a variance to do the garage.
Well, exactly. That's, I'm just saying, if, if that wasn't a, if the garage wasn't a part of.
But the issue, the issue comes down, he's got thirty-five feet to do whatever the hell he wants to do.
Yes.
Right? And he could've come here earlier and said, I wanna put a garage underneath, raise it up.
Right.
And by raising it up, I'm raising it over to whatever it happened to be.
Right.
And we probably would've said no. Right?
I don't know.
Based on the discussion we're having right now. So, so again, to me, that issue, the timing of the issue is irrelevant to the discussion.
Right.
Because he, he cho, I mean, he could chose to do whatever, I mean, well, I, I, to, to a certain point. I mean.
Yeah.
At different points in the process, he could've come and asked for different things.
Right, yes, yeah.
It's just, we're, we're ending up here now.
Right.
And I'm glad, I'm glad you got the garage done.
Yeah.
I, I'm glad you didn't sacrifice the garage for the widow's walk.
Right.
But at the end of the day, it's like, it's thirty-five feet.
Right.
You know?
It is.
You want railings, you want garage, you want a floor.
Right, yeah, yeah. And I, and I think that's what a lot of it comes down to, is that it, it is a choice that's made on, on what you want.
Correct.
So.
It's a tough one, though, because not every property in the city of South Haven already has a widow's watch on it.
I understand.
And you can have a roof deck. So, now we're talking about this structure on top of the structure.
Right.
That's not going to have a railing on it.
Right, well, then again, once again, then it just becomes a roof.
Roof, yeah.
Doesn't become a rooftop deck.
And, and I could go.
And that's within the.
And I could go climb out on my roof.
You could.
It's very, it's very pitched, so I should not do that. Um, but also, my roof doesn't have a widow's watch, nor, nor do a lot of homes in the city of South Haven.
There are many decadent widow's walks around town. They're not functional, rails too low, but it looks nice. There's one right down the street from me. They finally took the rail off probably because it was rotting around the rail.
Probably, yeah.
I think this could have implications, though, for future construction. Because I know of a house in my area, there's a cupola and, that of course had to be considered for height. I don't know if anybody can go up in it, but I think this could have implications, our decision that it could open the door for widow's watches, and I think we need to be mindful of that. And if I could just say one more thing, I don't think a variance was ever sought regarding this project prior. Is that correct? Just permits? Okay. So, and like, like I said before, the permit was pretty clear that what was gonna be done, that the railings had to come down. It was, you know, part of the permit, so, um, I just wanted to reiterate that.
I, I think to build on that, too, we would need as ZBA to be careful that we're not essentially rewriting permits that staff is writing for good reasons.
Correct, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely agree with that. Um, I know you had some things you wanted to add, if you wanna.
So, we, we built this to retire here, right? We took an existing home and we had to have off, off-street parking because you can't park on the street here coming up in like, whatever, fifteen days or whatever it is. Can't, so I get tickets when I park there. So, that was the main drive, along with the other items. But all the homes there that are tall, that everybody's talking about, that are so tall, some of those are rebuilt. There's one back in on Chicago. I'm trying to remember the guy's name. I think his, his name might be Dan, maybe on the corner back there. He rebuilt that place and took it up to get a garage under it, because he restored it to a living home, not just a, not just a cottage. That was our intent as well. I, I'm not here all the time.
Right.
I actually have a job in, in Arizona. I go back and forth all the time. It was very difficult many times when I was trying to schedule with, with, even just to come in here.
Right.
Is because I had to be there and I couldn't be here. So, please don't take the fact that things weren't done originally. Originally, we thought we had a shot that we wouldn't even have anything to talk about.
Right.
And then when we realized we didn't, it just became a matter of timing for me being able to, my schedule to come in. So, I feel like that, that's weighing on it. The other thing is, is that I understand how somebody will look at this and say, hey, it's a deck. But I'm restoring this house because I appreciate the architecture, and the architecture is that it's a widow's walk. It's not a deck. There is a difference there. So, if I was just Johnny who lived on Third Street and came in here and said, I'm gonna put in a, a widow's watch, it's like, well, your house isn't even of that era. It doesn't even do that. I mean, there's, there are areas to draw lines.
Yeah.
Last thing, I, I do can, I do thank all of you for being so thoughtful in the questions and going through everything. I do appreciate it. Obviously, I want this very much. Obviously, you guys will make whatever decision that you've come to, but I did wanna thank you for taking your time to do it. I do appreciate it. I've heard a lot of good questions and talk on it. I just wanted to kinda, some of those questions were like, oh, we have this problem, but it was actually caused by this. So, it's kinda like, you have one thing causing the other thing's problem. It's just, you can invert it or not invert it. I'm just here asking for a variance to increase that so I can put it back on. That's it. I had to have the garage because I can't park there. I'd have to, they wanted me to walk from Dykman.
Right.
Not, not doing that in the winter. So, it, it's, it's maybe simpler, right? Some things cause others, but I do, I do thank you for, for looking over everything.
Thank you. All right, Brandy, did I give you enough time? You were like.
The, the simple fact is, Randy, it exceeds the thirty-five foot maximum height in the ordinance.
Right.
That's, is that all we need to say?
Well, eh, eh, no. Eh, eh, it, it needs to be a little bit more than that, but yes, that is, eh, that's the crux of it, is that it, it is exceeding that. Um, you know, in, in to go back into the history of the other homes that are around it that have been rebuilt, that have, you know, have this or that. Kelly's absolutely right. Our, our height variance has changed so much over the years. You know, what was, what was one thing ten years ago is different today and.
Five years ago.
Right, yeah. We, was, well, what, things that were different six months ago were different today.
Right, but what I've heard.
So, eh, eh, I mean, you know, it's, yeah.
But what I've heard everybody talk about is, it's over thirty-five feet.
Right, yes.
And that's.
Yes. And that has become a huge sticking point.
Yeah.
That is one where maybe the city ought to someday look at it again, but they have looked at it so many times, maybe this isn't the time.
Right.
But as to your other question, I think, yes, thirty-five feet is the major issue. But we need to be very clear in how we came to this conclusion. In this case, we have many things that we determined didn't make it. And the reason for that is in case somebody does want to challenge the ZBA's decision, we really need a defensible decision. So, the more we can put into it, the better it is.
Yeah, to me, it's thirty-five, thirty-five, that's, okay, but go ahead. Yeah, it's, to me, to me, it's not even the number of thirty-five. It, eh, there's so many extenuating circumstances and it really doesn't, it really doesn't even come back to, oh, we said we'd do this for this. It doesn't even really pertain to that, in my particular mind. It's just a matter of, this is where we're at, how we got here, what do we do with it? How do we make it make sense? You know?
Yeah, to me, this is a, a difficult one, because personally, I love the project. I think it, it looks really great and it's gonna be a, a really lovely home where they'll hopefully make a lot of fun memories and have a good time. And I appreciate anyone investing to improve in our community and keep what's existing. But our duty as a ZBA is to go through the eight standards and they guide us. So, even if we all really want to grant a variance, if we can't say yes, all eight conditions are met, then we are obligated to deny a request. But it is always a, a property owners within their rights to carry on, and that's why it's important that we go through the eight standards and they have all this documentation. So, with that, I'll make a motion to deny the dimensional non-use variance request for ninety Avery Street based on the applicant's decision to raise the structure, to add garage parking, and denial would not prevent the owner from using the property for its permitted purpose. An approval would impair the purpose of the ordinance pertaining to the height limit of thirty-five feet in the R1C.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I could just briefly weigh in, I, to the extent that board members wanna have any discussion after this, I, I just think it's important to clarify that the fact that it exceeds thirty-five feet is not a reason alone to deny the variance. The, the fact that it exceeds, exceeds thirty-five feet is the reason for the variance. So, board members should, to the extent they wanna have any more discussion, you know, talk about why they believe the eight standards aren't met, but the fact that it exceeds thirty-five feet alone is not reason to deny the variance.
Then why do we have the ordinance?
In that case, would you?
Yeah.
Possibly amend to state specifically that for item eight.
Well, and I think there was more than eight. If, I think that there were two or three items, that would be helpful for the applicant.
Right. But the one I'm speaking of right now is, is item eight with, that it, the hardship was created by the applicant.
That would be.
There could be others to amend, too, but that was one.
Uh, so I do have some notes to work off here, so I, I could make an amendment to my own motion, correct? Okay, Samantha, bear with me. All right, I'd like to amend my motion. To make it easy for Samantha, I'm gonna try to start from the top. Speak slowly. Amend my emotion to deny dimensional non-use variance request of ninety Avery Street based on items one, three, four, six, and eight of the eight standards not being met. Item one, the circumstances. Are not exceptional to the property. The property owner elected to raise the height for this project. Item three. That it is not necessary for preservation and enjoyment. Due to. Nothing being removed from the home such as bedrooms, bathrooms, and other areas of the pre-existing home. Item four. That strict compliance of the requirements of the ordinance would not unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for its permitted purpose. As the home may still be used. As previous. Item six. Granting this variance would impair the intent and purpose of this ordinance. That the building may not exceed the maximum height of thirty-five feet in the R1C. And eight, that the practical difficulty was created by action of the applicant by adding the staircase and railing, which would exceed the height requirement of the ordinance.
Support.
Happy with the?
No, nothing further.
Okay, all right. All right. It has been moved and supported. Once again, any further discussion on it?
No, this is a motion on the amendment?
Yes. All right. Well, you know, alter.
She amended the motion. Do we?
Good point.
So, is there a, yeah, okay, good point.
So, my amendment needs to be approved. If it were approved, then that would need, that motion would need to be considered.
Right, yes. Well, on board with this?
So, so she created an amendment first?
For her own motion.
Yeah.
Right, yes. So, we are right now.
An amended motion, amendment to the motion.
Right, yes.
And, and if anyone would like to amend my amendment there, well, we should do it.
I'll support the amendment to this.
Yes, we have, yep, yep.
Now you have you, too.
All right.
So, we have two votes.
We have support twice. So, right now, we are voting on the amended motion.
The amendment to the motion.
Yes. I think we can, we could probably do that by, uh, do you wanna roll call on that?
It's your call.
Okay, I don't think we probably need a roll call on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, us.
All opposed? All right. So, we've made it through that. Now, let's go to the actual motion, so, which we have. And we have.
Well, I supported it.
Your support on that, okay?
Now, we just roll call that one.
Well, discussion. Any further discussion on that? Boy, Clark really looks like he wanted to say something.
Nope.
Okay, all right. I know, I was just giving you a second.
Yeah, true.
All right, all right. All right. So, back to the original here, or the amended. Samantha, if we could have a roll call, please?
Burrows? And a yes vote is to deny, correct? Yes. Gruber?
Yes.
Kupiars?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Blikki?
Unfortunately, yes.
Bemis?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
All right, so... And then with Commissioner comments. Oh, boy, hold on a second, we'll start tonight. Chris, you look like you have a lot to say.
No, I'm just, I, I, I've operated my previous career under the Roberts Rules of Order. I find them to be very cumbersome, but understanding they need to be very necessary. I just hope they don't get in the way of good back-and-forth discussion on things that I think are very important to the city.
Yeah.
Um, especially as it relates to new, creative things. Um, what I've seen is this, this city tends to, to transact on nostalgia.
Right.
And unfortunately, that prohibits progress. And I think it's good in a lot of ways, but I think it can be limiting in other ways. And I think the discussion that we have and the banter that we have back and forth facilitates us moving forward, so. Um, but other than that, I, I really appreciate how you ran the meeting. Um, Brandy, I appreciate how you step in and keep us all kind of aligned. Um, and it, it is, it's an unfortunate thing. You have to vote because of what we're, our responsibility is, um, not what you would like to have happen.
Right.
Um, because we go by, you have to go by that house a thousand times, right, if you want to go to North Beach, so, um, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you to staff for the preparation. Uh, that was tough, uh, especially when you delve into the history, and, and I think, uh, that, uh, Don made a good point of us wanting to step over staff's current previous decision-making in this process. Secondly, I want to thank Brandy tonight for all your notes. That was really tough. And thirdly, I do want to acknowledge that, that applicant, you know, this was really tough. And I rarely, I think, we've had an applicant actually thank us for the hard rolls and decisions that we're going to make, even when it wasn't going, I think, in his favor. I think he understands that we do take our roles really seriously, uh, because all the applications are fellow residents that we run into at the grocery store, at church, on the street, at the restaurant. And we are all just here, uh, trying to do the best that we, we can do. That being said, the, the one question that I did think about, uh, which would be, you know, when we look at the eight, number six, the variance will not impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance. Think anytime we come to a height, that's going to be a no. Or, you know, y- yeah, I, you know, I know, because it will impair, because it's always, one hundred percent. That's going to be really tough when we have decisions that we grant variances sometimes because they do need to be beyond the variance or beyond the ordinance, so I too wish Planning Commission would look at this again. And I've done it, I don't know how many times. It never goes well.
No.
You don't know anybody there.
Yeah.
I don't know anybody on planning.
But, you know, it is something that we need to think about because we, uh, we, as a city, need to look at housing differently. And what, what is considered a home or a dwelling or a place where people live. I'm done with that. No more so blocks.
Um, I agree with everything Clark says, and I think that's a great idea for you to take that back to planning and tell them what kind of struggles we're having here on number six. Um, and, and yes, it will be, it will be a struggle anytime we talk about height in this town because nobody agrees on everything, so. Um, but Brandy, thank you so much because every time I'm at a meeting, I learn something from you, like when to tell me just to, you know, zip it and how to nicely do that. And just so you know, they had to do that to me on planning, too. Tim would tell me, zip it once in a while, but, um, thank you for that. You, you did an awesome job with your note-taking. A nice, nice, nice meeting, Mr. President. You did good.
Lisa?
Um, I do appreciate the, the back and forth and the, um, conversations we're able to have on these issues. And, um, I will, I will say something about, um, as I was going over the Ninety Avery, um, information, um, I thought this is a perfect property to, um, seek, um, National Historical Register status. But I do realize that is a very, very challenging, cumbersome process and, um, but I do, I do really appreciate across the board, when people, um, rehab the home that is existent, even though sometimes it can be more costly than just, um, tearing it down and starting over, I am a big advocate of that and really do appreciate the effort that was put into, um, the property, that, that particular property. And I will say that he probably will be very appreciative of that garage very soon, so.
There are a couple of things. There's a reason my, my garage, which is an accessory structure, is exactly fourteen feet high. And why it doesn't have a decorative cupola on top, because fourteen feet was the limit. So, th- there's a reason for those limits. But the other thing, too, with regard to what you were saying about Roberts Rules, when I started back in the Dark Ages on the Planning Commission, they used another rules, they used Mason's Rules of Order, which are not quite as formal. They were really engineered for smaller groups.
Brandy?
Uh, good meeting tonight. Uh, thank you to the staff for pa- preparing the packet. When I saw we had three applications for tonight, I went, whoa, it's probably going to be a pretty late night. Um, but we, I think we're really all efficient, uh, with our time, so I really appreciate that. I think we gave, um, we gave time to each applicant. I don't feel like things were rushed, but we're getting out of here at a decent time, which I do appreciate, and a lot of that comes from hard work, um, behind the scenes. So thank you to staff, um, thank you for City Attorney being present. We definitely had some sticky spots here and appreciate, um, us making sure that we're doing our due diligence, um, on behalf of, um, this board. So we're doing our job, but also so the applicants and, uh, property owners, um, have what they need to, um, proceed as needed if needed. Um, and, you know, thank you for all of the letters and emails people sent in and, and being involved. And to all the applicants, all the applicants were really well-prepared tonight and, uh, really classy and, um, professional, and I really, really appreciate that. Um, you know, it's, we're talking about, uh, some things are pre- pretty, you know, can be pretty emotional, even though we have a, a really slim, um, place here. We're, and I apologize to any commissioners kind of jumping in there. Please jump in on me anytime and, and reel me in because I do appreciate everyone's comments and, and I think it was a great conversation tonight. Just want to make sure that we're always staying on track and, um, sticking to our really narrow scope because it is tough with some of these, um, type of applications where, you know, if it were me and it were, I were the property owner, um, you know, I, I definitely can see why some of these, uh, applications come before us. And if it's a yes or no, it, it would, it would sometimes be a yes, but the standards are provided for a reason. And the grand scheme of things, decisions we're making aren't just for what's going to happen this winter, but, um, possibly a hundred years from now, so that's all for me.
Excellent. All right, well, I again would also like to thank staff for everything that you guys do. Thank you for being here and keeping us in line, once again. Not that we try and step out of line, and... Yeah, well, that's true. Um, thank you to everyone for all the great comments back and forth, questions for the applicants. Brandy, thank you especially for jumping in tonight and, you know,
Clark brought him in.
Yeah, getting everybody online, and, and Clark really thanks you for, for the motions tonight. I mean, that poor man was so worried today, so... Um, yeah, I, it's sometimes really hard decisions and, you know, coming down to minute details on things, you know, there's... I, I think there's a little give and take back and forth, but, you know, again, we have our rules of criteria to follow and, you know, we have to do the best we can with that. And I think for the most part, you know, especially tonight, even though we don't always like the outcome, we do tend to get to and agree on some of the basic principles of those things, so. Again, thank you to you all, and, uh, with that, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
It's part, moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.